Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our first remote cabinet meeting. I'm councillor Simon Hennig, leader of Durham County Council and Chair of this meeting. Please note, this meeting is taking place on Friday the 5th of June and is being recorded live to the council's website. It will be available to be viewed for a minimum of six months. I would like to give a warm welcome to members, officers and any members of the public or media who are watching the live feed of this meeting. Before I commence with the formal business on the agenda, I would like to cover some of the housekeeping issues for us all to follow in order for the meeting to run as efficiently as possible. Please do bear with us, as this is very new to all of us. For those participating in the meeting, if you could please only speak when invited to speak by myself as Chair, keep your microphone on mute at all times unless invited to speak. If you do wish to speak, please type RTS in the chat function, which will indicate to me that you wish to speak. Once invited to speak, please introduce yourself with your name and position unless you have already introduced yourself earlier in the meeting. And if hopefully not, I lose my connection, please note that councillor Alan Napier, Deputy Leader of the Council, will take over in my absence until connection is restored. Before I move on to the formal business on the agenda, I can confirm that we have received no apologies and all members of the Cabinet are present. So if we can turn to item one on the agenda, public questions. I understand that no public questions were submitted in advance of the meeting and in accordance with procedure rules, therefore there are no questions for this part of the meeting. Item two is minutes. Can I have a mover and seconder to the minutes of the meeting of the Cabinet held on the 18th of March 2020, please?
Move the minutes, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Hobble.
Second the minutes, Chair.
Thank you. If we can agree that the minutes are a correct record, if there's any dissent, please indicate your wish to speak through the chat function. No indications have been received, therefore I can confirm if that's acceptable, that the minutes are agreed. Item three is declarations of interest. Can I ask if there are any declarations of interest from members, please? There being none, I will then turn to item four, Covid-19 planning and response. If I can ask Terry Collins, Chief Executive of Durham County Council, to introduce the report, please. He will be followed by Jane Robinson, Corporate Director of Adult and Health Services, who will talk in more detail on the content of the report. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Chair. Chair, the purpose of the report is to provide Cabinet with a summary of the actions the council has taken, working with partners to respond to the Covid-19 pandemic and our own framework for recovery planning. Chair, some of the details reported of the 26th and 27th of May, therefore some of the information may well have been superseded. A coronavirus was identified in Wuhan, China at the end of last year. The virus is highly infectious and causes a respiratory illness called Covid-19. The virus has spread rapidly across the world and was declared a global pandemic by the World Health Organisation on the 11th of March 2020. The highly infectious nature of the virus and the serious illness it can cause has significantly affected how we live, work and play. It has resulted in global adjustments to normal ways of life, travel and commerce to try to contain the spread of the virus, minimise deaths and to ensure that Covid-19 cases do not overwhelm health and social care systems. Chair, the council and its partners had emergency and business continuity management frameworks in place, which enabled us to respond promptly to the threat as it emerged. However, we've had to respond dynamically, revising our approach as the National Coronavirus Action Plan and Recovery Strategy evolved. The councils worked nationally, regionally and locally to protect our communities and to support those affected by the pandemic economically, socially and in relation to their own physical and mental health. County Durham communities themselves have been a major force in this and have made an immense contribution to the County Durham Together response. County Durham residents have observed and cooperated with national guidance. And while the lockdown restrictions are beginning to be relaxed for many, the council will continue to support many thousands of residents who are still shielding and still self-isolating. Council employees have also risen to the challenge and demonstrated their willingness to work flexibly, adopting new ways of working and supporting each other, focusing on what needs to be done to maintain services to support the local community. Locally, the council has worked with partner agencies via the County Durham and Darlington Local Resilience Forum, the LRF, to manage the multi-agency response to Covid-19. The council's Director of Public Health is a member of the Regional Health Strategic Group, which has worked with the three LRFs and other strategic planning groups across the region. The council has played a key leadership role regionally, supporting the LRF and regional health partnerships. Locally, the council has focused on the areas highlighted in paragraph 15, numbers A to L, in developing our response plan. Chair, in response to the pandemic, the council has taken a number of key actions and I would like to highlight some of these today. We've established a community support hub with the community and voluntary sector to support vulnerable people affected by the virus, including those affected and advised to shield themselves for an extended period. We've offered assistance to 75,000 vulnerable people, that's 75,000 vulnerable people in the county, as well as 13,271 people who said they needed help to shield from infection because they're at extreme risk of illness. We've established a volunteer bureau to help local people and groups who want the help. We've invested an additional 1.5 million via area action partnerships to support local and cross-county community responses and have enabled local members to allocate member budgets more flexibly, providing a further 1.8 million of revenue support. We've increased our welfare assistance scheme by a further million pounds to provide emergency financial assistance for those in crisis, utilising funding from the hardship fund. Extended the benefits of the local council tax support scheme, utilising the hardship fund to provide up to additional £300 of council tax relief and deranged individually with council taxpayers in financial hardship for their payments to be deferred with the instalments to recompense later this year. Chair, we've supported commissioned social care providers through over 13,600 telephone calls and the provision of advice and support. We've agreed 10% funded increases for social care providers in addition to their annual inflationary uplift to help meet additional costs of dealing with pandemic. And we've made £13 million of payments upfront as opposed to in arrears in order to help with funding and cash flow issues. We've supplied over 815,000 items of PPE through to the 27th of May, including over 480,000 items to the social care sector and managed the provision of emergency PPE on behalf of the LRF. We've supported over 8,000 businesses with total grant payments of over £94 million and we've been one of the best performing authorities in the country consistently in the top three. We recalculated the business rates of just under 2,300 businesses, applying business rate reductions and discounts totaling over £49 million. These are huge numbers, Chair, huge numbers. We provided advice and assistance to schools across the county and assisted over 240 schools to remain open to provide childcare for key workers. We've maintained all of our vital child protection, safeguarding and social care services, maintaining contact with children and their families throughout the emergency. And we prioritised the maintained service delivery wherever possible, which has involved facilitating homeworking for approximately 60% of our workforce and the redeployment training and development of over 500 staff. We've maintained essential services such as refuse collection, social care and community support. And we've rapidly expanded online service delivery, communications and online and telephone customer support, including the development of digital and video alternatives to face-to-face service delivery. Chair, the council's focus has now turned to restoring council services and laying the foundations for recovering from the pandemic. While there is a possibility that we may experience further outbreaks and pandemic peaks, recovering from Covid-19 will set the context for future community and council planning and decision-making in the county as we develop and implement the new county vision and council plan. Chair, before handing over to Jane Robinson, I would just like to make a few personal thanks for the help that we received during the emergency. First of all, thanks to our staff. They have shown incredible flexibility and a fantastic positive attitude throughout, despite incredible change at an incredible pace. They've been absolutely amazing. Our partners, Durham Constabulary, County Durham Fire and Rescue Service, or CCG, hospital trust, our university and colleges, schools, APs and community groups. I could go on, Chair, there have been many, many people and many organisations throughout the county who have helped and supported the council throughout this emergency. Chair, I would like to thank our trade union colleagues for the support that we've received in dealing with the emergency. You know, they've helped us enormously as we faced some of the most incredible challenges imaginable. I would like to thank our community for their patience and understanding, for observing the lockdown, for their fantastic support and for their amazing messages to our frontline teams, which I really appreciate and delighted to see some of those messages on our refuse crews that are going around our community now. These are really appreciated and as is the support of our community. And Chair, I would also like to thank our members for the fantastic support. I would like to thank Cabinet for their support throughout this emergency, for the regular briefings that we've had and the support that we've received and the guidance throughout this challenging time. Chair, I would now like to ask Jane Robinson to provide more detail on the context of the report.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everybody. I'll now take you through some more detail. As Terry outlined, on the 31st of December 2019, a cluster of pneumonia cases of unknown cause was reported in Wuhan City, Hubei Province in China. And on the 11th of March 2020, the World Health Organisation declared the Covid-19 outbreak as a pandemic, signifying that the new disease was now spreading globally. As of the 27th of May 2020, a total of 213 countries and territories have been affected. There were 5,488,825,000 confirmed cases globally and 349,095 confirmed deaths. In the UK, as of the 27th of March, there were 267,240 confirmed cases and sadly 37,460 confirmed deaths. Here within County Durham, there have been 1,976 confirmed cases and again sadly 532 confirmed deaths as of the 27th of May 2020. So in terms of the response to the pandemic, nationally, the Department of Health and Social Care, Chief Medical Officers, NHS England and Public Health England, supported by staff at regional centres, have led the national response. Appendix two of your report contains a detailed chronology of government announcements. The most significant policy announcement milestones are outlined from paragraph 35 onwards within the report. A key point to note, though, being the emergency legislation that was introduced and passed in just four days with the Coronavirus Act 2020 receiving royal assent on the 25th of March 2020. On the 6th of April, the government confirmed that local authorities would be allowed to hold remote council meetings and that the 2020-21 Annual General Meetings of Councils would be postponed. In addition, all forthcoming local elections and other polls, including the Police and Crime Commissioner elections, were postponed until 2021. The council has established work programmes to digest the national strategy, assess its implications and work towards its implementation as part of the response and recovery for the county. At a regional level, in the North East, the initial emergency preparedness, resilience and response to Covid-19 was structured around the already established North East Pandemic Influenza Framework, which was developed by NHS England, Public Health England and adopted by all three of the local resilience forums across the region. Public Health England took the lead in issuing public information and guidance and advice to partners in the local health system, universities, schools, prisons, LRFs, airports and ports. And detection and contact tracing all took place in the early phase of the pandemic until early March, when the national plan shifted from contain to delay. In line with the framework, local response arrangements were led by the LRFs. On the 25th of March 2020, County Durham and Darlington LRF declared a major incident in response to the pandemic and formally stood up its response arrangements with a strategic coordinating group led by the Deputy Chief Constable of Durham Constabulary. The council is a major LRF partner and has played a significant role at all levels and participated in the strategic coordinating and the tactical coordinating groups and chaired and resourced all of the multi-agency support cells established to manage the county's response as outlined at paragraph 51. In doing this, we've worked very closely with our LRF local authority partner, Darlington Borough Council. More locally, the council has been tracking the spread of the virus since media reports at the beginning of January this year. The emerging threat was reported to members via the Health and Wellbeing Board on the 29th of January and the Adult and Health Services Overview and Scrutiny Committee on the 6th of February. In February, a Covid-19 working group was established and on the 4th of March, we undertook exercise Cove with extended management and relevant strategic managers. Following the exercise, a Covid-19 planning group was established and a number of task and finish groups were set up to take forward priority actions identified through the exercise. On the 12th of March, corporate management team invoked the council's Corporate Business Continuity Plan, putting in place strategic management groups to plan for major staffing interruptions and loss of premises. During the course of the pandemic, the council has revised its incident response arrangements to dovetail with those established by the LRF, responding to national policy changes and to shift its focus from response to planning for recovery. The council has been proactive in working nationally and regionally to shape the response to the pandemic. And in doing so, we've engaged with the local government association, the county council's network, professional bodies, government ministers and departments, MPs and other local authorities within the region to understand and shape policy and coordinate efforts. Also, the corporate management team has met on a daily basis. And whilst council meetings have been suspended, decision-making has been maintained through delegated authority with corporate management teams scrutinising and overseeing the decisions being made. Cabinet members and the leaders of the council's political groups have continued to meet to be briefed on developments. And in addition, regular email briefings have been provided to all elected members. Local partners and stakeholders have also been briefed and there's been regular liaison with local MPs and other local authorities in the region. Moving on from paragraph 67 on the report, there is more detail on the specific response areas, which I'll just pick out some key areas. In terms of public health, the council's public health team has led the initial planning and response to the outbreak, liaising with NHS England and Public Health England on the regional command and infection control arrangements in line with the North East Influenza Pandemic Framework. The team has been proactive in assessing the World Health Organisation and government guidance on the virus, providing public health advice in relation to council services and partner organisations. Through our collaborative approach to public health, County Durham and Darlington are unique in having placed a dedicated public health-commissioned community infection prevention and control team, which has been at the forefront of our efforts to contain and mitigate the pandemic. The councils also worked with the North East Commissioning Support Service to develop a population health management model, which has informed the council's response in supporting those individuals who may be particularly vulnerable. In terms of our community support, the council established a community support hub to provide support to the increasing numbers of people who were advised to self-isolate at home and those who were advised to shield themselves. On the 27th of March, with the community and voluntary sector, the council established County Durham Together, a contact hub, support centre and volunteer bureau, providing ongoing support to the shielding population but also other people vulnerable to the impact of Covid-19. An emergency food and medication distribution service was established whereby council employees and volunteers would obtain and deliver food and prescriptions to people in need. This included the provision of food boxes for people shielding in instances where their national food parcels were yet to arrive or where the food parcels did not meet their dietary requirements and where individuals self-isolating had run out of food before they were able to organise their own supplies. Also, a telephone chat service called Chat Together was established to combat loneliness and working with the library service, a book delivery and ebook service was introduced. Throughout the pandemic, the council has also enhanced support for residents affected by domestic abuse, drug and alcohol problems and homelessness, all of which have been exacerbated by the pandemic. As of the 24th of May 2020, a total of 4,819 calls into the hub call centre had been received, over 3,000 of which required resolution and assistance with the hub helping people with food deliveries, food poverty, befriending, repairs, prescription, bills advice, welfare assistance and even posting items and looking after pets as well as a whole host of other requests. Establishing the hub has been a massive undertaking in a very short period of time and involved the development of a full staffing structure operating seven days a week, policies, procedures, protocols, staff and volunteer training, supervision and welfare support and the redeployment of over 200 council employees from other service areas in addition to the 85 contracted Wellbeing for Life staff. In regards to local community action, the hub has been built upon the key relationship between the council, its NHS partners and local community and voluntary organisations, working together to support individuals and local communities. Durham community action has been instrumental in working with the council and the area action partnerships to engage and support local community organisations in the response. The area action partnership's local knowledge, networks and ability to respond quickly have been key to enabling and supporting the local community response to Covid-19. This was particularly important in the initial two to three weeks between the publication of the Stay-at-Home Guidance on the 12th of March and the Guidance on National and Local Support for Those People Who Were Shielding, which was published on the 24th of March. During that period and while the community support hub was being established, local members, community groups and volunteers were active in organising and providing support to vulnerable people in their communities. Appendix three of the report provides a small selection of the many examples of local community initiatives supported by members and the area action partnerships. The council also established a volunteering bureau to engage and find meaningful and valued roles for volunteers across the full range of tasks and help required. In addition to all of the community support and action outlined, the council has to acknowledge the fantastic way in which local communities responded to the pandemic, with local people helping each other, their neighbours and people living nearby. The value of this has been absolutely immense and it very much supports our collective response, County Durham Together. Similarly, the council and its partners' task has been made all the more easier because the vast majority of County Durham residents observed the lockdown and cooperated with national guidance. While the restrictions are beginning to be relaxed for many, the council will continue to stand shoulder to shoulder with the many thousands of residents who are still shielding and self-isolating and we will continue to provide support. With regard to financial support for communities, the council worked quickly to provide support locally to communities. Working on community hubs, a total of 1.5 million pounds was provided to the area action partnerships across the county. This provided an additional £100,000 per area action partnership. Also, members' neighbourhood budgets were adjusted to provide additional revenue funding of 1.7 million to support the Covid-19 response. These two measures together ensured that a total of 3.2 million pounds was provided to support local communities from a very early stage of the outbreak. From paragraph 99, there's an outline in terms of the welfare support that the council has put in place and it's important to note that the council's retained a broad range of welfare support for those people who require it. And the fact that the council has retained a welfare assistance scheme where most councils have been unable to has enabled this additional support to be provided to those who are most vulnerable in the county and it's provided a valuable source of assistance. Moving on to social care and commissioning. The County Durham Integrated Care Partnership put in place a coordination hub to manage the support process for our residents. This has also been used to ensure that community health and social care needs of the shielded population were met. The council introduced daily monitoring and liaison with all commissioned service providers, including residential and nursing care homes and domiciliary care to ensure that they were supported throughout the pandemic and that operational pressures were identified and responded to as quickly as possible. The council also agreed a 10% temporary funding increase for providers in addition to the annual inflationary uplift and made £13 million of payments upfront as opposed to in arrears to help with funding and cash flow issues. To support care homes to tackle and prevent the spread of infection in their establishments, we have established a multi-agency infection inspection team to review and support the implementation of effective infection control practice and procedures within care homes. Public Health England has also provided advice, guidance and initial swapping of cases within care homes. Moving on to support for businesses. In order to support businesses, the council through both Business Durham and Visit County Durham has been proactive in contacting businesses and offering advice and support. This has included regular surveys and direct contact and advice on financial support and reorientating of business models. Appendix four includes a number of examples of where the council has assisted local businesses to rise to the challenge. Members will be aware that the tourism hospitality sector has been particularly affected by the lockdown and it is anticipated it will be some months away from being allowed to reopen under the National Recovery Strategy. Visit County Durham has provided advice and support to the tourism sector and the council's promoted online alternatives to some of our flagship events such as the Bishop Auckland and Sea and Food Festivals in order to continue to provide commercial opportunities to local producers. To support pubs, cafes and restaurants which have had to reorientate their businesses, the council's Community Protection Services has provided advice and guidance on shifting to food delivery and takeaway models so that businesses concerned are able to comply with the food standards and safety regulations involved. Where permissible and safe to do so, the council has supported the continuation of major construction and regeneration projects across the county. In terms of financial support of businesses, as with the support provided by the council to local communities, steps were put in place quickly to provide- steps were put in place quickly to provide support to local businesses. Reductions in business rate liabilities totaling approximately forty nine million pounds were made across two thousand two hundred and forty eight business rate accounts in line with the government's extended business rates relief schemes. Local authorities were asked to establish a scheme for paying businesses grants to eligible businesses in their area, following the establishment of a one point six billion business grant fund by the government. In County Durham, the council received a total of approximately a hundred and seven million pounds from the national allocation. At the time of writing this report, ninety five percent of the expected value of grants due to be paid has been paid to local businesses with work underway to target those businesses that have not yet applied for the support that's available to them. If I can move on to education and children's services, the education service has been proactive in providing advice and guidance to schools and parents in the county through all stages of the pandemic. As schools prepared to close, curriculum development advice was provided to help schools provide remote home learning packages and materials during lockdown. During the course of the lockdown, over two hundred and forty schools in the county remained open to support the children of key workers and this provision extended throughout the Easter school holiday and the recent public holidays. In the light of key issues beyond the council's control, national scientific advice, delay in the track and trace system and high regional infection rates, the council took a proactive decision to advise schools to delay their phased reopening beyond the date set by national government. With regards to safeguarding and children's social care, the council has ensured that its statutory duties in relation to child protection, safeguarding and social care have continued to be met and that regular contact has been maintained with children known to social services while schools have been closed. Moving on to neighbourhood services, during late March, partly in response to the enactment of the coronavirus regulations, a rapid assessment of frontline services was made. Libraries and leisure centres closed on the eighteenth of March, followed a few days later by decisions to close customer access points, park and ride, play areas, recycling centres, festivals and events. Highways and construction maintenance were reduced to emergency response only with winter maintenance continuing uninterrupted. Clean and green crews along with other staff, drivers and council vehicles have been redeployed to ensure that we were able to maintain the weekly household refuse and recycling collection service. Protecting the waste collection service during the anticipated peak of the pandemic involved temporarily suspending the start of the garden waste service. However, that was reinstated at the beginning of May and a further three thousand households have signed up to the service this year. We also worked with the contracted provider of our household waste, household waste recycling centres to reconfigure how the sites could operate and the waste be handled. The twelve council and household waste recycling centres reopened to the public on the eighteenth of May. In terms of online services, a major aspect of maintaining service delivery has been the rapid expansion of online services and communication, including storytelling for children, the Durham Music Service and events remotely to celebrate the seventy fifth anniversary of VE Day. Also, the Techna Gym app, which supports fitness and cardio sessions in people's own homes. On the fourth of April twenty twenty, the government published regulations which allowed local authorities to hold remote committee meetings. And as the chair said, today's meeting of cabinet on the fifth of June is the first remote meeting to be held online. In respect of workforce and human resource management throughout the pandemic, in response to the pandemic to support the new working arrangements, the council introduced a comprehensive emergency human resources policy as outlined at paragraph one hundred and sixty seven. This policy was developed with the support of trade unions and the council has continued to track and monitor staff absences and illness. As of the twenty seventh of May, absence related to Covid nineteen was two point five percent with overall absence fairly consistent at six point five percent of the workforce. This has enabled the council to continue to operate at around ninety three and a half percent capacity. Moving on to testing, a key element of the national response has been the introduction of testing to monitor and enable containment of the spread of the virus and to develop intelligence which can support the development of treatments and vaccines. The director of public health has worked with regional colleagues from NHS England, Public Health England and local NHS Foundation Trusts to develop and coordinate local testing programmes. The council is now working with Public Health England and the Association of Directors of Public Health on track and trace testing programmes and the establishment of a local outbreak control team is the next step in containing coronavirus outbreaks. Moving on to recovery planning, from the very outset of planning its response, the council established a recovery task and finish group to begin the process of planning how the county and community life would adapt to a post-Covid nineteen world. Details of this are outlined from paragraph one hundred and eighty five. The council has used this work to revise its own Covid nineteen governance arrangements to shift its focus from response to recovery, the key elements of which are outlined from paragraph one hundred and ninety. As the council moves into recovery, it will be necessary to consider the significant changes to working practices and working patterns during the Covid nineteen response. Work is underway to consider how new ways of working, new technology and different ways of working can form part of the council's culture in the future, which will deliver many of the plans the council has in place as part of the transformation programme. At the end of twenty nineteen, the County Durham Partnership developed a new vision for the county. The council is in the process of developing a new council plan to better enable us to work with partners to achieve the vision and to continue to develop as an organisation. Progressing this work will be key to moving forward beyond Covid nineteen and the response and recovery. In terms of financial pressures and government funding, the latest assessment of the Covid nineteen financial pressures was submitted to government on the fifteenth of May twenty twenty. In total estimated expenditure pressures and income reductions that the council has forecast total approximately fifty million pounds. Two tranches of funding have been received from government as outlined at paragraphs one hundred and ninety six and one hundred and ninety seven, totaling thirty three point two million pounds, leaving a shortfall of sixteen point eight million if no further funding is received. However, the overall financial impact of Covid nineteen on the council is unlikely to be known for some months and is dependent on the length of time lockdown measures remain in place, the timescale and extent of recovery for communities and local businesses, the extent to which demand returns from income-based services and the extent of future government support. So Chair, in conclusion, the coronavirus pandemic is one of the most profound challenges society has faced for more than a generation. The council and its partners had emergency and business continuity management planning frameworks in place, which enabled us to prepare and respond promptly to the threat as it emerged. In line with the national response, the council has worked regionally and locally to protect our communities from the virus and to support those affected by the pandemic economically, socially and in relation to their own physical and mental health. County Durham communities themselves have been a major force in this and made an immense contribution to the County Durham Together response. Our focus has now returned to restoring council services and laying the foundations for recovering from the pandemic. While there's a possibility that we may experience a secondary outbreak and pandemic peaks, recovering from Covid nineteen will set the context for future community and council planning and decision-making in the county as we develop and implement the new county vision and council plan within the context of the significant financial pressures we can expect to face. Chair, the recommendations are outlined at paragraph nineteen of the report.
Thank you for comprehensive reports and presentation. Can I just, if I can just ask everyone to mute again please, thank you. Can I start my comments by saying that our thoughts will always be with all of those who have lost family and friends to this terrible virus? I would like to move the report and recommendations in front of cabinet this morning in paragraph nine nineteen. In doing so, I would like to thank all staff across the council for all of their hard work over recent weeks and months. I would like to thank all of our communities right across County Durham and I would like to pay particular tribute to the large number of community groups and volunteers who have been working so hard in their own areas, as well as all of the frontline staff working across all organisations. Together, their efforts have been immense. This has been an unprecedented period. As the report states, one of the most profound challenges society has faced in more than a generation. Although our plans are now turning to recovery and the gradual restoration of services, we must all accept that unfortunately, the challenge is far from over. So with that, I'd like to move the recommendations. I would now like to invite councillor Alan Napier, Deputy Leader of the Council, to second the report.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, everyone. I'm Alan Napier. I am the Deputy Leader of the Council. I also hold the finance portfolio within the cabinet. Like yourself, Chairman, I would like to pass on the council's thoughts and condolences to the families who have lost loved ones. Our deepest sympathies go out to you with these, the saddest of times. I want to place on record my thanks to local communities across County Durham who have come together along with the council to provide support to those who need help from the start of the coronavirus outbreak. Chairman, our local people, members, our staff and local businesses have all played their part in helping to minimise the impact of this disease. I want to thank every one of you. There are many areas of the cabinet report that I could speak to. However, I will focus on our support to businesses and the financial cost of Covid nineteen. When the business grant scheme was announced back in March, we recognised that we would have to make contact with our local businesses as quickly as possible so they could be prepared to submit their applications for the grants as soon as guidance was available from government. We're one of the first councils in the country to start to pay out the grants and were recognised as being in the top three councils in the country for paying the grants so quickly. Chairman, I know local businesses are being extremely appreciative of our approach in County Durham. This was no mean feat and we have now paid out almost ninety six percent of the grants that are due to be paid, totaling ninety five million pounds. We mustn't forget that at the same time as dealing with thousands of business grant applications, we're also processing reductions in business rates liabilities for over two thousand businesses. I have to thank our business rates team and Business Durham for their exceptional work in this area. Chairman, we lobbied government to provide further support to some of the businesses that were unable to access the initial business grant funding and I am pleased to say government have listened. A further extension to the scheme was launched on Monday, which will help more businesses in County Durham. We will continue to lobby government to allow us to use any unallocated grant funds to support other businesses across the county. The report also sets out details of the revenue funding that has been made available through Covid nineteen grant from government. In total, the council received eighteen point six million initially, followed by fourteen point six million. The total allocation so far is therefore thirty three point two million. We have estimated our costs and lost income at fifty million pounds, meaning a shortfall of almost seventeen million pounds, Chairman. The council's second allocation of funding was reduced by twenty two percent because the government moved to a population basis, a very crude population basis of sharing out the money, whereas the first allocation was based on need. The first we knew of this change, Chairman, was when we actually received the second allocation. Members of cabinet will know that I have argued year after year that resources need to be allocated based on need and we have again lobbied government to set out the requirements to fully fund council's Covid nineteen pressures and to allocate any future funding based on need. I will be watching future allocations of funding with interest. The effects of Covid nineteen are likely to be with us for years. I am calling on government to ensure local authorities are properly funded to be able to lead on recovery of our local communities and businesses. A continuation of austerity is not the way forward. To help us, to help our local communities, we need government to level up our resources quickly and then look at how they can make up for the years of austerity. And Chairman, everyone is aware, we have suffered ten years of austerity by providing more funding that will allow us to invest in regeneration and to get our local economy moving again as quickly as possible. Chairman, I'm happy to second the recommendations as set out in the report.
Thank you. Can I now invite councillor Lucy Hovells to speak, please?
Thank you, Chairman. It's been a very difficult heartbreaking time for the past twelve weeks. I would like to pass on my sincere condolences to all those who have lost their loved ones. My thoughts are with those who have suffered bereavement due to this Covid nineteen virus. The key priority for the council is at a very early stage of the coronavirus has been to protect the most vulnerable residents and to support our care providers who have been doing an incredible job in extremely difficult, challenging circumstances. Chairman, I would like to take this opportunity to place on record my thanks to the care staff and all frontline workers. The council have put in place a comprehensive range of financial and practical support to the independent private care homes across the county. By having daily contact with the care home providers, we've been able to understand and respond to any difficulties that they have faced, whether that be PPE, whether that be staffing issues or food supplies. The council response has been in line with the emergent government guidance, which has changed and evolved throughout this course of the pandemic crisis. It's been important that we have worked along with our partners and our report to the integration of health and social care. This has helped us in this regard. We have played an active role in securing tests for our residents with the NHS working in partnership, tests being provided for patients, the healthcare, core staff, council staff and our residents within the care homes. We have worked with the military to roll out the mobile testing programme and this was rolled out across the county. You may remember Seum and Be- in Beamish, however, there were some challenges and I think it's important that I mention them this morning. The challenges was the tests were being advertised from the government. However, when people, our residents were going to book them, they were told the appointment was in Edinburgh, which takes several hours to book and then obviously people were having to travel and the sites weren't listed, which was making it easy accessible for our residents. So I wrote on behalf of the council and the residents of the county to the Secretary of State, Matt Hancock, in the early May, when things was peaking up, to raise these concerns. However, I am yet to receive a response back from the Secretary of State, so I'm still awaiting. And again, Chairman, you heard from Jane's report and which she outlined the amount and the vast amount of work that's been carried out within the care and health and social care sector with our partners. And again, I would just like to endorse what's been said and also put on record my thanks to the social care staff and our partners and to say thank you, Chairman, this morning.
Thank you very much, councillor Hovells. Can I now invite councillor Brian Stevens to speak, please?
Yeah, you're muted, Brian.
Councillor Stephens, can you unmute yourself, please?
My apologies, Chairman. Good morning, everybody. My name is Brian Stephens, and I have the portfolio for neighbourhoods and partnerships. Chairman, our neighbourhood and community support effort has been at the heart of the council's response to the pandemic. The hubs contacted every vulnerable and shielding household within the county, providing vital support where needed and making sure no one fell through the gaps in the national response. We also made £1.5 million available to support the local community groups. Our critical functions such as household waste collection continued to work effectively during lockdown, and we are now working to restore all other services in a safe manner. I would like to place on record our thanks to all the staff and to our community partners, who have all worked long and hard during this period to support the people of Durham. We know from the feedback that we have received that our efforts have been truly appreciated during this unprecedented and for many tragic events, Chairman.
Thank you very, thank you very much, councillor Stephens. Can I now ask councillor Owen Gunn, please, to speak?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everybody. My name is Owen Gunn. I'm the Cabinet Member for Children and Young People Services. First of all, I'd like to also offer my condolences to everyone who has lost loved ones during this period of the pandemic, and also to express my sincere gratitude to NHS and care staff, and in fact, all frontline workers. I'm turning to paragraphs 133 to 145, and as Jane Robinson mentioned, the education has been extremely proactive in providing advice and guidance to schools and parents in the county through all the stages of this pandemic. And this has included providing business continuity planning advice and information on the national planning assumptions, and also ensuring that schools receive the relevant public health advice during the initial weeks of the pandemic. As schools prepared to close, curriculum development advice was provided to help schools provide remote home learning packages and materials during the lockdown. Support and advice has also been provided on how schools could continue to fulfil their free school meals commitments prior to the government announcing the introduction of the National Free School Meals voucher scheme. That was a crucial aspect for us. And we've continued to work with schools to try and resolve the challenges with the national system, which has caused great difficulties for some families. A key area of the work was to support schools to remain open to provide childcare for the children of key workers. The council has worked with schools to coordinate this provision, and where necessary, to direct key workers to where provision is available, if it has not been possible for the local school to remain open. During the course of the lockdown, as Jane has mentioned, over 240 schools in the county, 240 schools remained open to support the children of key workers, and this provision extended through the Easter school holidays and recent public holidays. I have to say that our school staff have been quite extraordinary in responding to the many changes and challenges that have faced them. And since the government indicated when and how it envisaged schools should reopen, our precautionary planning was reviewed and advice and guidance provided to schools to help them assess the feasibility of reopening to additional pupils in a phased way. In the light of the key issues beyond the council's control, which are national scientific advice, delay in the track and trace system and high regional infection rates, we provided updated advice to schools on the safe reopening of them. And due to these challenges, we took a proactive decision to advise schools to delay their phased reopening beyond the date set by national government. Our priority was and continues to be the safety of children and staff in school settings. I cannot emphasise that enough, and our position will be reviewed as the situation changes. With regard to safeguarding in children's social care, a really crucial issue for us, the council has ensured that its statutory duties in relation to child protection, safeguarding and social care have continued to be met, and that regular contact has been maintained with children known to social care. This has included using a wide variety of social media and digital platforms to augment regular face-to-face contact. This mixed approach has proved successful in maintaining high levels of contact with children. The council has continued to discharge its responsibilities as a corporate parent to look after children and care leavers, and the Chair and Vice Chair of the Corporate Parenting Panel have met with young people during this period, and I thank them for that. The service has continued to review our support to foster carers to ensure we have been flexible in response to the challenges created for carers throughout the lockdown period. Many council establishments providing different aspects of social care to children and young people and their family have remained open and have provided services using social distancing and infection control measures. Our children's residential homes have continued to operate at normal capacity. I would like to place on record my thanks to every one of the staff in Children and Young People's Services. They've shown tremendous commitment in facing the challenges of COVID-19. And I would also like to place on record my thanks to head teachers and their staff for all of the resilience they have shown in facing their ever-changing challenges in this COVID-19 landscape. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Gunn. If I can now invite councillor Joy Allen to speak, please?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everyone. My name is Joy Allen, and I'm the portfolio holder for transformation, culture and tourism. Like my other colleagues, I would like to express my heartfelt sympathy to all those families who have lost loved ones and thank everyone who has worked tirelessly, day in and day out, on the frontline throughout this national crisis. I think we've all agreed the council's ambitious transformation programme has made dealing with this crisis much less challenging than it would otherwise have been if we had not have modernised our work and practices and equipped both our workforce and our elected members with the necessary equipment and software to enable them to work from home and closer to the communities we serve. Testament to the agility of the transformation team, they themselves were quickly redeployed and then operated the Durham Together Community Hub. They have also been running the operational side of the community hub alongside staff from our leisure and library services and making the critical in-depth calls and organising tailored support packages for our residents. As I have mentioned, our library service also rapidly developed an alternative and innovative service offer that enabled residents to join and access the library services online for the first time. As a result, we have seen increased library membership and a 149% rise in ebook learning. We've also been able to offer our most vulnerable residents personalised doorstep book service, and our library members have been able to access the popular Ancestry online service from the comfort of their own homes, enabling individuals and families to research family and military history and access our extensive range of historical documents. Recognising the challenges of homeschooling and keeping our little ones occupied, our community arts team partnered up with North East theatre makers, writers and performers to host interactive storytime sessions for young children and families to enjoy. Also throughout the lockdown, our DLI collection team have been developing a brand new range of digital resources, the schools that will be available in the autumn term. I am delighted to report that many of our volunteers who regularly come into the Research and Study Centre have also been able to work remotely to support the development of the new exciting exhibitions at the Durham History Centre. Our culture team has also been working in partnership with Durham University, and together they have commissioned an new online festival, On Stage Online, which will run from the 11th to the 14th of June, and regional performers will produce a new piece of socially distanced work that we hope will attract national attention. At the outbreak of this crisis, our tourism team at Visit County Durham stopped all activity other than the provision of business support, advice and guidance to over 1,000 of the country's visitor economy businesses during. And during lockdown, they have been in regular touch with business community to understand the impact of COVID-19 crisis. And these important findings have been shared with Visit England and Visit Britain and the Department of Culture, Medium, Sport, and will use this evidence to lobby the government for important government sector support. The team have also provided tailored advice and support to over 1,170 local hospitality and tourism businesses. And after the disappointing cancellations of both Bishop Auckland and Seam Food Festivals, we wanted to do everything we could to support our regular traders and create a virtual food festival online, enabling them to sell and deliver their popular food and drink directly to the public. Now more than ever, we recognise it is essential that we protect tourism's future. It attracts 19.8 million visitors and generates £914 million spend in our local economy while supporting 12,000 jobs. During the lockdown, the team developed a virtual visitors campaign to encourage people to love Durham from the sofas of their homes and to keep Durham front of mind when they were planning future visits. And we supported the English Tourism Week to highlight the importance of tourism to our local economies. Finally, Chair, I would like to put on record my gratitude and appreciation to all our staff who have stepped up to the plate and continue to deliver essential services and delivery and deliver an impressive range of new services to meet the needs of our local community.
Thank you very much, councillor Allen. Can I now invite councillor Carl Marshall to speak, please?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. My name's councillor Carl Marshall. I'm the Cabinet Lead for Economic Regeneration. I just want to start by echoing the thoughts of colleagues across the Cabinet in offering my condolences to those families who've been affected by the coronavirus and paying my thanks to all of the communities who've stepped up to support each other through these unprecedented times. Chair, I want to focus on the way that businesses have responded across the county and the way the council has responded to support those businesses. And I want to start by paying tribute to businesses who have continued to operate through these extremely difficult and unprecedented times. I think it's important that we recognise that this report represents the first chapter of the COVID-19 story, and we know that the recovery journey is going to be extremely tough. Over the coming weeks and months, I'll make sure that every effort's made to continue our support for businesses, large, medium and small, in every corner of County Durham. I want to applaud those businesses, Chair, from across our county. They've really proven their resilience and adaptability. Many turn their hands to supporting the crisis with the production of PPE, sanitiser, scrubs, and joining organisations from across the globe in researching into a vaccine to this horrible virus. I want also to pay thanks to those key workers and businesses who've kept working through these times, risking their own health to keep others safe, fed and watered. We've lobbied government strongly to support those businesses who've not been able to access the support that's been offered, in particular sole traders, smaller medium enterprises and the leisure, tourism and hospitality industries, all of whom employ thousands of residents from across our county. And most of these are likely to be hit hardest by the COVID-19. So we'll continue to pressure national government for a bespoke package as we understand how many people from across our county rely on these organisations for jobs. Chair, I just want to pay tribute also to our transport operators, taxi drivers, bus drivers, train operators and others who've helped to keep our key workers connected. We're continuing to work alongside all of our bus operators who are working hard to ensure a return to pre-COVID-19 network coverage as soon as possible. And we'll work with operators and partners to ensure government provides a sustainable financial model for transport going forward. Myself and our team have continued to support organisations and regeneration projects, including many inward investment inquiries. We understand just how important businesses are to our recovery from COVID-19. And despite the current situation, I know that companies from outside of our area are actively considering investing in our county. Support and regeneration and growth across our county will be vital as we recover from the global pandemic, and we will continue to work alongside partners such as the North East Chamber of Commerce and the Federation of Small Businesses, as well as many of our business networks across the county as we face the extremely challenging economic times that inevitably lie ahead. Finally, Chair, this report rightly highlights the essential services that have been central to the COVID-19 response. But I want to also pay tribute to the many council workers who may not have been delivering essential service but who've been working tirelessly to keep services going in the background like planning, council tax, licensing and many others across the board. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, councillor Marshall. Can I now invite councillor Andrea Patterson to speak, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, everyone. I'm councillor Andrea Patterson, and I'm the Cabinet Member for Corporate Services and Rural Issues. And first of all, I too would just like to echo the comments made by my colleagues in relation to my condolences to all those families who've tragically lost loved ones to coronavirus and to express my gratitude to the NHS workers and carers. And I'd also like to pass on my sincere thanks to everyone who's been part of a magnificent effort to help those most in need of support over the last three months. Chair, for me, I'd like to just focus on two key areas. Our fantastic staff, who've been simply amazing, and our technology and the way we've used that technology to make sure that we can keep our services running. And it's the largest council in the North East, employing almost 10,000 staff in a variety of different roles. It's taken a huge effort to put policies in place to allow our staff to continue working and to provide the services to the people who rely on them every day. Whether it's been the frontline service staff to those working behind the scenes, we quickly put in place a range of policies to allow staff to work effectively and efficiently, but most importantly, safely, because their wellbeing is paramount. We've redeployed volunteers to work on our new services, including supporting the most vulnerable in our virtual, virtual community hubs. And we've retrained staff to help in other frontline service areas. I can honestly say Chair, it's been a monumental effort from everyone right across the board, and I am extremely proud of everyone who's contributed to keeping those vital services running. We've worked closely with the trade unions as we've developed new policies and working practices, and our staff and the trade unions are telling us that we've got a lot of things right, which is absolutely brilliant. Of course, they're keen to know what happens next, and we'll continue to keep them informed through clear communications, and we'll ensure their welfare is at the centre of our thinking. With our digital strategy, some of our services were moved to online provision very quickly to ensure local communities could still receive a service. For example, we've heard about our ebook For example, we've heard about our ebook service that was expanded. And who can forget how we were able to commemorate the 75th anniversary of VE Day through a digital remembrance? I never imagined it was possible, but it was. And I know many people enjoyed being able to commemorate such an important date in our history. Our staff and our members have been able to keep in touch and undertake their work simply because of the significant investment this council's made in technology. In a council of this size, getting the technology right's no mean feat, but we have got it right. And it's helped so many staff to continue with their work, even though they haven't been working at their normal base. Chair, without effective HR and ICT arrangements, the response to this virus would have been far slower and we wouldn't have been able to help our local communities as we have done. And I would like to thank all of the staff and members involved in ensuring that we had the right resources at our disposal to be able to respond as effectively as we have done. In closing, Chair, I'd like to remind everyone that County Durham is predominantly a rural county. We mustn't forget the impact on our rural communities. And we will be working to ensure that our recovery plans acknowledge those rural towns and villages as we go forward.
Thank you, councillor Patterson. Can I now invite councillor Angela Sertes to speak, please?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning. I'm Angela Sertes and hold the Cabinet Portfolio for Social Inclusion. I want to also take the opportunity to place on record my thanks to the staff of Durham County Council as partners and also our local communities across County Durham who have done so much to help those in need across our county. But I would also like to extend my condolences out to all of the families who've lost loved ones during this extremely difficult time. Our welfare support in County Durham is second to none, in my opinion. Prior to the coronavirus outbreak, we have managed to maintain a welfare assistance scheme to help those vulnerable people who have fallen on troubled times. One of the few councils who've been able to do this during the last 10 years of austerity. We have seen a demand for living expenses double during the coronavirus outbreak. And I am so pleased that this council has been able to offer this support at a time when people need it most. We've relaxed our welfare assistance scheme and made it more flexible to help more people for longer. We have also worked closely with landlords and individuals to help them with housing-related issues throughout the crisis and we will continue to support them going forward. This council has also been able to increase the benefits of the council tax support so that anyone of working age who claims would have had their council tax bill reduced by £300. This is actually double to the government's recommendation and is only possible because we have maintained our own local council tax reduction scheme. This support has helped over 9,000 claimants so far and it changes on a weekly basis. We also suspended any recovery action and allowed payment deferments to help residents who have struggled to pay their bills. In closing, Chair, I do want to highlight the report from the Office of National Statistics from the 1st of May, which set out the impact that the virus has in more deprived areas. This study showed deaths involving COVID-19 in the most deprived area of England were significantly higher than in more affluent areas of the country. The figure was actually 55.1 deaths per 100,000 in deprived areas as opposed to 25.3 deaths per 100,000 in the more affluent areas. So this will be an area that I will be looking into more closely as part of the council's work to consider the impact of poverty more generally across County Durham. Although it does seem clear to me that in general terms, areas with higher levels of deprivation clearly need more investment to help them to grow and to prosper and to remove inequality. This important aspect of work will be a core part of our recovery strategy going forward. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, councillor Sertes. Can I now invite councillor Kevin Shaw to speak, please?
Thank you, Chair. I'm Kevin Shaw. I'm the Cabinet Portfolio holder for Strategic Housing and Assets. I must also start by echoing what previously been said by yourself as leader, the deputy leader and all members. I express my most sincere condolences to anyone who has tragically suffered loss during these unprecedented times during the pandemic. To the officers and staff of the authority, I would like to place on the record my personal thanks for all of the work that is being delivered by our teams right across the county. Working to support our communities, to support our businesses, to support our social care and most critically, to provide for individual need. And to all the businesses and community groups who have risen to the challenge. Focusing on housing, our housing teams have worked tirelessly to support general housing needs, supporting landlords and tenants, and our homelessness teams have ensured that no one has been made homeless during this time. And when any new cases presented, they have worked with our partners and have quickly ensured that any new cases were very quickly resolved. I would also like to thank, last but not least, our local communities who have come together in such a magnificent way. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Shaw, and thank you to all cabinet colleagues for their contributions this morning. The recommendations in paragraph 19 have been moved and seconded. So I'd like to ask if we can agree the report and recommendations. If there is any dissent, can I ask that you indicate your wish to speak through the chat function? No indications have been received, so with your agreement, therefore, I can confirm that the report is agreed.
Correct.
Item five is any other business. I've not been informed of any other business this morning. Before I close the meeting, I would like to thank everyone for taking part and to those members of the public and media who've watched this meeting.